I'd like to begin with a quote from Martin Luther King, seeing his birthday is January 15th. "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And I'd like to end this with a prayer, seeing we're starting a new year. As we begin this new year, we want to thank you, Lord, for your many blessings, your blessings upon our nation, our town and community, and your blessings upon us as individuals. For this, we are very thankful. As we look forward into this new year, I ask for the following: that you would help bring peace into this world that desperately needs your peace; that you would touch the minds and hearts of our leaders, that they would make the right decisions that affect the lives of so many; that you would touch the minds and hearts of our students, that they become all that they can be and all that you would have them to be. And finally, especially pray for this board, and I ask that you would bless us, help us as we work together, give us wisdom to make right decisions, and help us to administrate the best benefit of all those we serve. Amen. Now the pledge.
(inaudible) Kathy, can we have roll call, please? Oops, sorry, forgot one thing. Fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire or a fire alarm, please, to my left, to your right, through those doors and down the stairs, or directly behind you through those double doors. Now Kathy, you can do roll call.
Mrs. Ungar?
Here.
Mr. Warwer?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Mr. Peabody?
Present.
Chairman Serrard?
It's my understanding we have no board guests tonight?
Correct.
Okay, if we can move to the superintendent's report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have one student representative present, and you have information in your packet from both schools, so I'll let you have your student representative give you her additions to the report that's in your packet.
As we're approaching midterms, it's actually a very exciting time for our seniors. A lot of seniors are receiving acceptance letters from their colleges, and a lot of the ones I know are getting from their top schools, so that's good to hear. Now is when we have more and more scholarships coming out, so everyone's been busy with that. Everyone has adjusted very nicely to the moving of the cafeteria into the auditorium. It's all gone smoothly, as far as I can tell, and as everyone has been. You know, we have the signs and everything for the entrance and the exit. And Thursday night at 6:30 in our auditorium, we will be having a Fermi and Enfield High chorus concert that everyone is invited to attend. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, right before the Christmas vacation, we did finalize the process of selecting a new chief academic officer, and I wanted to officially welcome her to our board meeting. Michelle Middleton is our new chief academic officer. She's here with us this evening.[211.01][211.01](applause) Michelle had been our humanities coordinator, and filling in her place on an interim basis is Megan Burr, and I believe she's also here.[223.48][223.48](applause) At this time, we'd like to call our chief academic officer for at least the next four days, Anne McKeonan, up to the front, and we'd like to say thank you and goodbye to her.
On behalf of the board, I know it's been a short time you've been here, and I feel that you have made a good impact on the school system here, and a little of our appreciation to you. We have a gift for you, and we wish you good luck in your new venture at the State Department of Education, and wish you many years there. Thank you very much. Thank you. I would like to thank everyone, the board, Dr. Schuman, the cabinet, and all of the principals, administrators, teachers, parents, who I've been able to work with. It's been a great two years and seven months for me. It's been a wonderful community. I've learned a lot about the local side in education, coming from a RESC. This was a new perspective for me, and I learned a great deal. I think you have a great community here. I don't think anything can stop Enfield from being the best.
Thank you.[310.64][310.64](applause)
Mr. Chairman, the remainder of my report is regarding some special events that are scheduled for the month. They're all in your packet. Things will be happening in January and moving forward towards the end of the month to get ready for next year and do our budget work. So that's what I have for you this evening, for now.
Okay. Audiences, do we have anybody for audiences? Last chance? Okay. Board member comments, go to my right. Mr. Peabody?
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Couple of questions came up over the holidays, and one of them was, one of our past meetings, Mr. Genitis asked where we got the funding to bring back the three seats to Suffolk OAG, and my comments to the individuals who asked was, we ended up with a surplus at the end of the year, and that's where the money came from. And I just want to go on record saying that, yes, through some good fiscal management, we did have a surplus last year, and the town always graciously allows us to carry that over into the next fiscal year, of course, minus the 25 grand or so that we needed to fund those students. Through the chair to you, Dr. Schuman, for next meeting, perhaps we could get an update on the high school transition, and I would like to know if any identified one-time cost. What I would like to see, what I think we would like to see, rather, is those one-time costs defined as what I term a transition budget. Try to make every effort to keep those out of the operating cost, so we don't have to cut any programs or anything out of the normal operating budget. And I know, talking to a number of town council members, they would like to see it done that way as well, if we can. Over the holidays, we had some challenges, and I'd like to thank Building and Grounds for their efforts with the burst pipe at Enfield High. Also, I think there was a feeling that perhaps communications could have been tightened up, but the timeline that I saw, we were informed in a timely manner, and mailings did go out to the parents at EHS for the asbestos removal. Anne McKeonan, thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it. You led us through Common Core. That was a tough enough assignment. I do know that after sitting in on some of the orientations, like at JFK, I was very pleased to hear that we had a balanced approach to things like math and literature and some of the items that the Common Core wants to put more rigor on, and I very much appreciate that. And I have monitored things nationwide. I have people out, like Indiana, that send me stuff all the time, and it seems to me the approach that we took was top-notch and very respectful for our students and parents, which I think is very, very important. Thank you for that. That's it.
Ms. Ungar?
I just wanted to thank Anne for all her time and energy and her enthusiasm that she's shared with all of us. It was very contagious, and I also want to welcome Michelle, and I look forward to working with you.
Mrs. Thurston? Do you want to turn that up a little bit, so everybody can hear you?
Anne, I wish you the best of luck. And, Michelle?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Michelle, congratulations. I'm done talking for the night.
Do we have a motion on that? Mr. Neville?
I think I'm going to say ditto to a number of things they've said about Anne, but I think, Anne, you said that you learned a lot from us coming from the RESC and coming into the public school system here. I think we learned much more from you, and I think you taught us a lot about curriculum and what curriculum should be. I think Ray and I can speak to the fact that we love your enthusiasm for what you've done for the work that you do. You brought not only that, but you brought your experience, and you brought high expectations. You wouldn't accept less than high expectations, and you just assumed that we would get there. And I think we loved that part of it. And above all, we liked your energy and your sensitivity, and I think you always erred on the side of the kids, and I think that was something that I've always held in high regard. And even by the pictures you put around the wall of your office area there, you were showcasing the kids. It wasn't about you. So, thank you for what you did for us, and thank you for all we learned from you. I have one other thing that I'm going to ask through the chair for Kathy to get out to the board. There's an article in the JI about magnet schools, and I believe Ray was pushing us towards one that was in The Current this weekend. And it's not for me to put down magnet schools, but it's an issue of the question of, there was a moratorium on building additional magnet schools until there was a report on the effectiveness of them. And I think all I'm looking for is to have us speak to our representatives and educate ourselves about what's going on here, but also to see what we can do to get a report out about the effectiveness of them. I thought it was a fairly comprehensive article, and I'd just like the board to have the opportunity to read it, so I'll give it to you, and you can give it to Kathy. And that's it.
Just a couple of quick comments. Again, I'll echo the sentiments of the board tonight. Anne, thank you very much for your service for the town of Enfield, and Michelle, good luck.[684.73][684.73](laughing) No, I'm sure you have a good staff behind you, and we have a lot of dedicated employees here for the town, for the school department. I'm sure you'll do well, and Anne, you did a great job, but thank you again. One thing I'm going to bring up tonight, and I might upset a few parents out there, but I guess it has to be said. Over the last week or so, we've had a couple of inclement weather days, and on social media, and I'm sure a few of us board members have gotten calls about the decisions that the superintendent made or didn't make on the inclement weather. I'm just asking parents to be a little tolerant. Try to be in his shoes for that five or 10 minutes that, you know, when you get a little upset because your kid is not going to school, or why he wasn't delayed, or whatever. It's a tough decision he has to make early in the morning, and you know something? I don't want to be in his shoes to make that decision, and I think people think that we have the control over him to do that, and we don't. I don't mind hearing the complaints, you know, that's what we're here for, but I'm just asking parents to just be a little more tolerant, and try to think of what he has to decide. You know, I'm sure he's out there for the well-being of the students and the staff of this community, but we do have to get these days in, and, you know, and the kid's being safe. So just take a minute and think. Thank you. Yes. Sure.
Just on the work that the chief academic officer did, when I got on the board in the first curriculum committee meeting we went to, I gave Anne a challenge. I wanted grants to pay for the office of the chief academic officer, and I want everybody to know that we got three curriculum coordinators for the price of one. The salaries for two of them were paid, so Michelle, I'm giving you the same challenge. Good luck. Last point I'd like to know is, we've been talking about for a couple of meetings, the $250,000 shortfall that we have in our budget due to the crack increase. For next meeting, if we could, I'd like to, possibly for the finance meeting, have a strategy or a plan put together as how we're going to make that money up within the current budget without going back to the town for more funding. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? No? Okay. New business. Dr. Schuman, your presentation of the 2015-2016 budget, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to get the technology set up, and then we'll get started. Do I have my glasses? Can you see it this year?
It's so quiet.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah, it just came.
Just came.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. Can you guys all see that? Works okay? Okay, good. Right, okay, now we're ready to go. The budget process, it's hard to believe we're here already. It's hard to believe we've already spent four or five weeks thinking about next year's budget, but it's part of what we do, and we get started very early involved in planning for the next year, usually before we really get our feet wet in the current year. One of the things that we begin with every year is looking at why we exist, what we're here for, why do we have the Enfield Public Schools? And the way for us to best visualize that is for us to look at our vision, creating a world-class school system, our mission to inspire and develop each individual's gifts and talents, and our spirit of commitment to a lifelong learning process. And we look at that through our promises. We believe. We nurture. And we aspire. We always keep in mind and hold true to our values: excellence, creativity, pride, integrity, resilience, and kindness. School system is a complex system. It's made up of many integrated parts, many tasks and responsibilities. We have broken it down and look at it through five different domains. First domain is finance, and that's where we are tonight, talking about our budget. But finance goes further than that. It involves getting our payroll out every two weeks, involves all of our accounts, the grants you talked about, transportation, insurance, fiscal control of the resources that we have. And we are a people business. We have nearly 1,000 people working for us. Managing that, recruiting the best people, hiring the best people, making sure they're suitable to work in Enfield, evaluating them, managing the benefits that we provide for them, and then bargaining with their bargaining agents when those cases take And technology. We broke technology into two areas. The ITPC, our joint venture with the town which keeps our infrastructure up and running, and our educational technology that our professionals use in the classroom to enhance learning, and also to teach our students how to use the technology of the current times so they will be prepared for the lives they're going to lead. And our academics, the curriculum, you've talked about that this evening, the leadership we provide, the instruction, the professional learning to grow the capacity of our staff, and the partnerships that we develop and work with so that we can provide additional opportunities for our students that we couldn't normally. And finally, our students. Making sure that we grow each student to their fullest capacity, being well aware of their safety and security, their mental health, giving them athletic opportunities, and helping them to understand the world as it is and the one they're going to go live in when they become adults. In order to do that, it takes a pretty significant amount of resources. This year, we ran the district on close to over $68 million. 51% of that money comes right from local support here in town. 43% comes from state aid, and another 6% comes from the grants that we receive from various organizations. Each year, we begin by looking at what can we do better? What do we want to add to enhance our school system? We sit down and we talk to all of our administrators, we have talked to their department chairs and their teachers. We compile the list. Our staff has identified 40.3 new positions they believe if we had them, we could do a better job. Positions like high school mathematics, middle school reading, middle school computers, social workers, more music teachers, primary school counselors and social workers and psychologists, and computer teachers and art teachers, kindergarten paraprofessionals, putting a paraprofessional in each classroom, so there's two adults working with those first learners, our youngest learners, assistant principals at the intermediate level, another special education coordinator to handle the growing needs of the multitude of students who are receiving special education services, and building our support in the summer at each of our schools by expanding the amount of time that we have our clerical support there to aid our principals. And there are some things that we need, too. Science lab equipment, instructional supplies, additional textbooks, more musical instruments, replacing the art kilns that failed several years ago, and additional athletic supplies. Mr. Peabody, in yellow are the transitional items we're going to need for next year. We've just found out that the new commercial culinary lab at Enfield High School is going to be ready for use in September. And we also heard about band uniforms. If we want our band to have new uniforms in the fall of '16, they've got to be ordered probably in the fall of '15, because it takes that long to get them up and ready. So we looked at all these things that people identified, and they can all be defended. Comes to over $2.2 million to do all of these things. It'd be $2.2 million, new dollars added to the budget. We thought very carefully about what we could support and move forward, and unfortunately, we can't support much. We're going to be moving forward just one item from this. We're going to move forward the staff and supplies we need to open the new commercial kitchen at the high school. It'd be about $57,000. It'll cause our budget to go up 0.09% next year. And all of the other things that you saw on that previous sheet, we're not going to be able to support right now, and you'll see why in a moment. We're going to take a look at the drivers, the things that are driving our budget increase for next year. First one we're going to look at is salaries. To meet the obligations, the contractual obligations we have with our bargaining units, and all of them have new bargaining agreements, it would take 2.15% increase in our budget in order to do that. It would actually take closer to 2.8%. We have reduced our contractual obligation by $425,000 in the assumption that we will get some retirements. We have two in hand. We need about 12 more to make that $425,000 assumption come true. So we're banking on another 10 or 12 people coming forward and telling us they're not going to come back next year, they're going to go into retirement and allow us to have those savings. If we don't get that, then of course this number would be short. We have benefits that we have to provide, our health insurance benefits. Our agent of record came to us and said, you need to increase your benefits by 15% for next year. 15% would cause our budget to go up 1.8%. We're going to make another assumption. We remove $400,000 from that line item. We put it up 10% instead of 15. We're gambling that it's going to come in lower. Traditionally, it does tend to drop over the budget process. We're going to take a step ahead, and we're going to advance it tonight by 5%. It's still going to put our budget up 1.27%. We have pension responsibilities, we have disability responsibilities, and we have a lot of fluctuation of things in and out of all the other accounts in the budget. All of that added together drives the budget up 0.15%. As you know, the town is moving from a fully funded workman's comp situation to a self-funded workman's comp situation, and on our way, we're in the second year of a high deductible plan. The Board of Education in the past has paid about $400,000 for our premium for our workman's comp policy. In addition, the board is averaging around $500,000 a year in claims. And in the high deductible plan, the board is responsible for the first $250,000 of each claim before the workman's comp kicks in. In order to budget for this, in the past, we've only budgeted $400,000. We've budgeted an additional $500,000 to handle your claims, because we're now responsible for that, and we've put an additional $400,000 in, which would cover one and a half major claims were they to come. They may or may not come, but we are responsible for that now. We no longer have a backstop protecting you from the liability of paying those claims if they come. So we had to increase the budget 1.4% in order to safeguard the workman's comp area. Special education. Our special education department is the largest one in the district. About 167 people work under special education. 80% of the increase in special education next year is going to be simply due to contractual obligations. And you'll see when you look through your budget book that the operating costs of the department are really staying pretty flat. Again, we all know and have seen in the past that this number can fluctuate. If some high-need students move out of our district, we have a savings. If high-need students move into our district, we have a responsibility. So right now, I feel that the special education budget is well within control, and as again, because it's such a large department, the increase of 0.78% to our budget is driven mostly by the salaries to employ the 167 people. Earlier tonight, Mr. Peabody talked about magnet school tuition. We are $250,000 short of that number that we budgeted last year. In next year's budget, we've added the $250,000, and we've increased it another $170,000. Again, one of those numbers we just don't know. Together, they account for a 0.66% budget increase. And the final piece is the ITPC. We all know how we've been working with ITPC. It's about a $2 million bill, and throughout the budget process, the town council ends up picking up a portion, or has in the past several years, picked up a portion of that bill and relieved the board of having to do that. But at the onset of the process, we must fully fund the ITPC or else significantly reduce its value. So in order to fully fund the $2 million, this year, we have a little over $500,000 in your budget. We have to bring that up to $2 million. It's an increase of 1.44 million. It's a 2.25% increase in the total budget. So we look at all these pieces put together, the small amount for transition, the salaries, the health insurance, the pension disability and non-personnel, the workman's comp situation, special education, magnet school tuition, and the ITPC, we require an 8.75% budget increase to perform next year what we do this year. There is no new money in this budget. The only new money in there is $57,000 to open the new kitchen. And I think it would be a shame to have a brand-new facility sit vacant for a year while we waited for the staff from Fermi to come over. Some important data for the board to understand and to take a look at and to consider. We look at the cultural generation gap, the change in incremental periods. What we notice is, the students coming to us, we're getting a different culture of students. We're going to get some more bilingual students. We're going to get different diversity than we have right now. Another thing, and you can't see part of this, it goes off the chart, what this is showing is that the poverty is moving out of the cities and into the suburbs. There are more folks struggling in the suburbs than there ever have been, and since 2000, that number's gone up. And you may hear of something called ALICE. ALICE talks about folks who are above the poverty level but below a threshold of individuals who can really survive very well, and this is what we're seeing a lot in the suburbs. There's a new report out, the United Way has done, it talks about the ALICE level in each community and who those people are. But what we're finding is there's more families struggling. We understand that. One of the ways to alleviate that is through education. This chart shows, at the very bottom, actually going across at the top, are income levels. And at the very bottom, okay, you can bring that back up. I can bring that up. Is your income level or your expectation for earnings with a high school Is your income level or your expectation for earnings with a high school or GED, high school graduate or GED, you're at the very bottom. The purple line in the middle, up about a third of the way, is what you can expect if you have an associate's degree. One of the partnerships that I know Anne and the academic officers was working on very hard was getting our students ready to earn an associate's degree through his nuntuck one year after they get out. So bringing them up that first level. The line in the center is all majors averaged with a bachelor's degree. But Enfield's taking a giant step forward. If you look at the very top, it's all STEAM-related activities, and we are making a very important STEAM focus, beginning with our LEGO initiative in kindergarten all the way up through the new high school, and with the opportunities the students will have. So we are doing the right things. We're working to get students an opportunity to earn their way up this ladder and have a more successful financial future. Something else that we notice, back in the 70s, the investment that parents made in their children seemed to be about the same in terms of whether you had a high school diploma or a bachelor's degree. What we're finding in the last seven years is those families whose parents have a bachelor's or more are able to make a greater investment in their students. That investment in turn pays off in terms of what those kids are able to accomplish. We have another gender problem. If you look across the bottom, these are the opportunities that you might have if you were able to get a high school degree, less than a high school degree, an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, or a graduate degree. Our young women can expect to earn 72% of what our young men can earn if they achieve the exact same through their studies. That's another thing we need to work on. We need to fix that. We need to give our young ladies an opportunity to go into those careers that will allow them the earning potential that the young men have. The paradigm we've operated under, if we've taken individual differences, the multiple intelligences of our students, the cultural diversity, the curiosity, the passion, creativity, and we funnel it through our public school system with the idea of creating individuals who have employable skills. You can see Einstein's quote below. Another one of Einstein's definitions of insanity is if we continue to do the same thing and expect different results, we are insane. The new paradigm we need to consider is we need to find ways through our schooling to enhance human talents. It's no longer about employable skill, it's now about enhanced talents. Our students must be able to think creatively, reason systematically, work collaboratively, and engage respectively. This budget will provide the resources necessary for us to continue to move in this direction. The administration and myself are ready to work with you over the next six or seven weeks to take a deep look at this budget, take a deep look at the resources, how we allocate them, and move them forward for consideration to the town council. It's going to be a difficult process. We've already spent a lot of time involved in it. We're gonna give you your budget books this evening, you can comb through it, and we'll be prepared, uh, next week sometime when we have, uh, some more members of the board back on their feet after getting through the flu and whatnot that they've been wrestling with, and, uh, and we have a, a process ahead of us. We understand it's gonna be challenging. We also understand that the future of our children has to be what motivates us as we go through this process. So, Mr. Chairman, when we finish this evening, we'll make sure each board member gets a, a notebook, and we'll get one to the members who are missing.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, next on the agenda, we had a 2015-16 budget discussion. I'd like to defer it until we do have our next meeting due to the part that we don't have, we're just getting the budget, uh, booklets tonight, and also that we're missing a good chunk of our board tonight, and to have a, a good discussion on the budget, uh, it's not feasible tonight with not everybody here, so I'd like to bypass that and move on if that's okay with everybody.
Good. Point of information, could we just make a couple of comments about the process?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I, I don't know whether, Dr. Schuman, you have copies of the, um, the budget brochure there, very good, and I assume that's on our website as well for people to get. Um, I, I think, I like the idea that we've got that laid out there with all the meetings set and so on. One of the things I'd like us to do, particularly initially, is not cancel any meetings. People will put it on their calendar like we do, but have them there for the next three or four weeks so that people can know where we're gonna be, can be party to that discussion, and can hear the, now, and see the transparency of that discussion of how we arrive at, at our budget. I think it's critical that we do that, and I applaud you folks for getting that particular thing out there. Secondly, as we start to find things in, in the, um, the budget document that we need more information on, if we could possibly, as soon as we find them, channel them to the chair to get to the superintendent and, and hopefully get out to us the data prior to the, the discussion that's coming out. If we all get in the habit of doing that, we'll, we'll all be prepared to, and, and everybody will have the same information as early as we possibly, uh, can get it. I think if we have different things, whether it be articles or data that we want to share with the board, for instance, I, you know, we threw out some things tonight about the, the magnet school tuitions and stuff like that. If we could get that through the chair and it can make a decision about getting that shared with the, the board in as timely a fashion as possible, it'll help us deal with that. And, uh, I, I don't know whether at some point in the process, because we did talk about bringing back our legislators, that if, if they could come in, if we end up having some questions for them, or we need data from them, that we can again channel that through the chair or have them come in to present that so the public sees, you know, here's those questions that we have as well. So, my two cents.
Mr. Peabody?
I'm gonna give you a penny. Um, what I'd like to see us do too, Tim, uh, going along with what you were saying, we email, let's, let's copy all the board.
Yes.
Let's make sure that, because we're all, um, we don't ask the same questions and we just kinda streamline our communications. The other thing is, how soon can we set the budget workshop schedule? Um, I'd like to get that. I don't know if that's in the brochure, I don't remember that.
It is.
It is? Okay. Short memory.
You book that every Tuesday.
Oh, isn't that nice? That's right. It's on the calendar at home. All right.
All set? Okay, next on the agenda, board committee reports. Uh, Mr. Neville, do we have anything under the building committee?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just a second. Uh, first of all, the, we met on the eighth, the building, the-
Building committee had asked, uh, if they could come, uh, before the board at a future meeting, and I'd worked it out, and I believe it's February 10th that they'll be coming in and make a presentation to us and, uh, and, and take any questions that we might have about the project at that point. I believe they either have or, or gone to the council already and they, and they'd like to, to have the same opportunity to present to us. Um, I think, yeah, I think people know that we had, uh, two different, um, things happen over the Christmas holiday, one predicted and, and one that was, uh, I think a credit to the weather, uh, and it did delay some things and, um, uh, and I think caused some consternation with, with folks about, uh, you know, I think they, they blended them together. One was planned and it, and, and one was not, but they still required some additional funding to get rid of the asbestos. And the asbestos that was in there was really in the mastic in the tile. It wasn't, it wasn't asbestos on the pipe, it was included in the mastic, it was contained, but, uh, I, it's required to come out and, and go through the containment process to do that. Secondly, there's a two-week delay. We've been pretty much on schedule, actually a little bit ahead of, ahead of schedule, but, uh, there's a two-week delay right now due to finding an old retired fuel tank that was cleaned and filled with cement that was in the area where I believe they're doing the cafeteria or in that area. And it's gonna, there's an additional $92,000 that had to be added to remove it, uh, because it's right in the way of where we're running all of our drain pipes, all of our, you know, fuel lines and all that stuff, so it has to be, it has to be removed and, and contained. So it's, it's, it's not a big thing, but it's like any building project, anybody's been through one, there are always little surprises that come up that you just didn't know, and it's, I think, I think it was, the use was discontinued 20 or 30 years ago, and, and they did the appropriate thing, but there was nothing out there, so they buried it, and, and we needed, we needed to get it out there. They're also finding quite a bit of ledge out there, which is causing some additional, uh, money to, to get out of there, uh, as, as well. Um, anybody that's been by the, the building has seen the, the steel is, is up, they're, you know, they're, they're closing it in, they're pouring, they're pouring the, uh, the, the flooring down there, they, they've got the, uh, the, a lot of the, um, the drains and all that stuff are in there, they're working on the roof. You're gonna see some amazing things happen in the next four, five, or six weeks. My understanding also is that in mid-February, there's gonna be a presentation on the FFNE, Dr. Schuman, and, uh, I know that the transition committee's been very, very involved with that, uh, and I, I would suggest we stay on top of that. One of the issues with that is, uh, in terms of the money that's there, it depends on any other surprises that come up, and I, and I think, um, we're hoping that there are very, very few and that we have more money to spend on, um, fixtures, furnitures, and equipment, right? Okay. Um, and I think that's about all at this point, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neville. Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Regular meeting, December 9th, 2014. Gavin Motion?
Move to accept the minutes.
Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Peabody. Show of hands, approval? And also approval of the special meeting minutes, December 17th, 2014. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Peabody, and seconded by Mr. Neville. All in favor, show of hands. Okay, I believe we do not have any approval of council and payroll tonight?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no correspondence and communications? Uh, any, anybody in the audience wants to speak? Second chance? Going once, twice? We're good? No need for executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What, what was that, Mrs. Thurston?
Couldn't hear you down the side.
I, I didn't hear ya.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
So bad.
We are adjourned.